Not adjusting well.
All right, well, I would like to call the November 8th Village and West's regular Board Meeting to order. Jerry, you're up.
I'm ready.
You're in. Life of the region.
I'm in.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Andy seated. We will begin this evening with public comment open to the public. If you have a comment, I'd like to address the board. Please feel free to do so. The side over here with your name. Do you want to address the board then?
Actually, I'm really up here just to say thank you to the village for what you did for the Trick or Treat Trail. Turned out great. The day was soggy, but we still, by all good accounts, had about 400 to 450 kids out there based on the number of pieces of candy that were handed out by the merchants right inside the village. So I would just like a little poll to see what's going on. So the side at the end at the Harmony House, they did about 350, so there you go. But I want to thank all of you for your support and continued support in the future. We did have about 54 merchants participate, which was just about, if not the record for the Trick or Treat Trail. So hopefully we'll keep all 54 and the sun will shine next year. So it turned out well. We didn't get a lot of dogs, but when the rain started falling, I figured that some people might keep their dogs in, so we're going to try the dogs again next year, kind of hone down the advertisement a little bit, make sure people know that there are prizes. And I think with a little good sunshine, we might get, like, not only a lot of dogs, but a lot more people out, too. So thank you all for what you did. And Darryl, I got to tell you, you look great as a grasshopper.
Well, Peter, thank you.
Thank you.
Next week, next year, Jerry had a great suggestion that we need to bring to the bill of that here possibly to set up a day, a week earlier, maybe. I mean, everybody more or less has, has at that point decorated for Halloween, and that would could die then maybe a rainy day.
Yep.
Be bad over the next week.
It's a good idea.
We've had two years. Last year wasn't bad until 3 o'clock or 2:30, and empty the streets, which was okay. But it was a tough one this year.
Yeah.
Do give people credit for coming out.
They sure did.
As bad as just the rainy day ends up raining harder than the day you cancel it. Then we don't know how good of an idea it was.
I think it was a good idea.
Thank you. Yeah, Peter, thank you for, and your wife for.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Did leading up to this, so.
Thank you.
And the doggie prize.
Don, thank you for judging.
Mr. Herr, that's here. Rather fun, Dan.
I don't think there were too many rides though, right, Jake? Kind of.
No.
There was exactly zero.
That was really want to sit.
On what trailer?
What value.
Jake made many trips back from the bucket there on the table.
I was protecting children and making sure the candy was safe.
Well, any other comments or adjustments for it? If not, then I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move on to regular Village Board business. First of all, resolution to approve minutes. You have the minutes for October 25th. Hopefully you had an opportunity to look them over, and if there are no questions or comments regarding it, I would ask for a motion to accept the minutes as written by your clerk.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Second, now, we're looking at a resolution to approve the claims and warrants, pay them. I looked them over. I had a chance, I believe Ju did as well, though she's not here, and so we keep her in mind, and Sarah's not feeling too well this evening. I had a chance to look them over. I only had a couple of questions, and one of them, Jake, was just a general one. Where was the emergency with the sewer, the line in 110 feet? Pretty familiar. Where was that?
That was right out in the parking lot behind the village hall. There was a collapse just north of the drain inlet there, and we chased it down, and as we made a repair to that, this cambered the line going north out to Main Street, and there was, it's a corrugated metal pipe that was rotting away, rusting and rotting away. So we slip lined that with a HDB pipe they pulled, or I guess they pulled it in from the parking lot. There was just one big pipe that spews the other now that goes all the way from that up to the manhole in the exit.
That was that. Yeah. I agree with that. That was the only question I had.
And then just one more question, Mr. Mayor. So we had to adjust, we just didn't want to change the whole abstract. We got a invoice from Tractor Supply, and it was just, it's just increased by $1.67, so you know. So it's actually, the total is $53,562.92.
Tractor Supply, which I have a question. But I won't.
Oh, don't.
Okay. If I can have a motion. Okay. You have a question?
No.
Then I would entertain a motion to pay the claims and warrants. That was there presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next is our comp and overtime report. I believe that this goes through the 26th.
Correct.
And Jake, would that then be inclusive of overtime for Trick or Treat Trail or overtime earned?
No, would not. That was, that was more than 27.
Yeah, so it's a Navy force.
Well, it's approximately, approximately, so I guess we're trying to pick in for a weekend.
See that on the next one?
Okay. Other than that, I have no, no comment regarding that. Thank you. That's important. Next, we have a discussion regarding the founding software, which presented to us at the last board meeting. It is an opportunity in January to make a change from all of the various Harris accounts and programs to a new AccuFund program. We would be buying the software, and we would therefore not be involved every year with licensing fees, those kinds of things, I believe. And they have broken this, been willing to break this into two separate years. The first year, on receipt of contract signed, we would pay $27,397, and then we would budget through in July for the additional $24,000. And that would, that would cover it. I believe in our conversation, you all remember from our last meeting, we talked about the savings that would be there regarding the licensing as well as, what was the other? Talked about, about taking down about $42,000, right? In terms of savings over two years of the net cost, so what it would be about $42,000.
Is that about right, Chris?
The actual update is here from an email sent at 404 this afternoon. The halfway point, upon signing the contract, we would pay $28,351.
And what he means with the additional savings?
Yes, I understand. You have it.
Okay, so that $27,397 that I have on here changes as of?
There was another email sent later.
It's in your package.
In my package.
On your, on the iPad.
All right.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Well, at least we get the court.
So what do you, so anybody have any comments regarding this? I thought it was something that we've had a discussion about a number of times over the last few years, and I think it brings us up in terms of, say, a little bit more relevant and maybe easier to work with. The only drawback, I think we had a discussion about was the fact that they would be on payroll. It's about payroll, that we would be responsible for payroll, and I don't know what that will do with our insurance. Smith wants to talk to them about that or whatever. So if you agree, why don't you say?
I think it's a great problem.
Chris, you, Chris sent this, I guess it's the contract engagement letters. The only question I had, there's this Gold Solutions Services, which includes support, I guess, 24/7 that expires on November 30th, 2019. And then up for the software, you're also paying $3,206 for maintenance and support.
Is that?
So, Chris.
Seems duplicative.
It's included the first year.
What's included?
In that, in that figure. And then after that, we have to decide if we want to go with the other company in there. They, they, they contract out with Brisbane, and at that point, it wouldn't cost us, what was it, the recap? Basically, we'd be picking if we want to do it per service call, or it's like $1,500 for, for the year.
I'm just talking about, not really next year, I'm just talking about this year. It just seems like you're paying twice for support services. $32,06, and then you're paying $31,000 to Brisbane directly. So I should point that out?
I don't have a specific, I see where you're coming from. I could ask that question, of course.
You would, you would pay for $31,000, they would delete the $3,200 bucks, you know?
Well, there is a core discount of $22,000, so technically you could say it was $1,000.
Well, all right, even so.
My, my understanding was that it was for the following year, but we'll look into that. I apologize.
This doesn't say anything about it.
Can't go on your understanding.
Got to get things in writing. It seems like it snuck in there.
I think that all sort of carried out.
So I think we need clarification, obviously.
I would, I appreciate that. Otherwise, I'm in favor. I would at least be consideration of change to the program. So upon clarification of that, we'll propose this for the next meeting.
I would like to request, if at all possible, because of the time constraints we're under, if it would be allowed by the board to approve this pending clarification of that $3,200. I'd hate to have to wait another 10 days.
Well, they were looking to put this in place January 1st, right?
But that means we have to start preparing now.
And what will you be preparing?
How to change all the account numbers, train the staff as to, I mean, if it's going to be live January 1, that means we need to know how to use it by then. And that's only, we're only got, we only have six weeks to do that. And if you postpone until the week of Thanksgiving, that cuts us down another 10 days.
So is that, is that enough time to learn, to train it anyway? Is that enough time? Because don't, we're also taking on liability now, we're on payroll, right? So before we can blame it on paychecks, now we can blame it on ourselves.
Yeah.
So we should also make sure that we're trained properly, and you have enough time to, Jake's giving me that look, I could see it.
Well, you want, when you, when you mention payroll, considering I have a certain way that, you know, the payroll rules, the tax rules and all that changes constantly, how to keep up with that?
Keep updated.
That's.
So we did ask that question, and AccuFund, they make sure they're up to date on everything. We asked, we specifically asked that question with updates now.
So how do you find out about the updates?
It's automatically in the system.
On the app in the system?
Yeah.
So realistically, do, do they tell you how long it really takes to learn this and train? Is this short?
Six weeks, which is about where we are right now.
And who's learning, who's learning at three?
Four, at four.
Four, we want four.
I understand that, I think we don't want to rush anything.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's efficient, and if that other thing's gone, and you guys are like, oh my God, what do we do, and now we're responsible for payroll? Isn't that?
The payroll does make me nervous, I guess.
Yeah.
I mentioned that earlier.
Is this a seamless type of thing, or?
Seamless, as seamless as any new computer program can possibly be.
Why would you piggyback it with the, the Harris program?
Well, those will be running concurrently to an end point.
Is that just kind of be the?
Well, with paychecks, that's the anticipation, but we may reconsider perhaps and maybe let it go for another three months, you know, concurrently, so to speak, you know, not die with.
Right.
Right. Because of the magnitude of what payroll represents, obviously.
Did we find out whether or not paychecks have a contract?
Yes, we do have a contract. We need to let them know 30 days before we're going to cut that contract in writing. So we would have to let them know relatively soon if we were really going to cut the cord.
Well, if you're going to run something concurrently, you can't cut the cord until it has run.
Understood.
30 days would be somewhere in September, September.
We could pick up vote pending the $32,305. $32,06, pardon me. We could vote on that.
We would like this to begin, if you would like it. Have you checked with Smith at all in terms of insurance regarding anything that goes wrong in terms of payroll? Because it is, it is a liability, so it might be worthwhile doing that as well.
Yes, definitely.
And we are, we are currently resigning the insurance, so it would have to be an add-on if there is a need for that, or we would need to know. Maybe in light then of contacting Smith Insurance regarding liability for this insurance, as well as finding out about the appearance.
Yeah.
If you'd be willing to vote to have, have a site, if it's possible, you all know, and you should say no. And I will go out to all of the board.
I'll stand up.
I'll be right. You can do it, you can, you can do it conditionally. You can authorize the mayor to sign engagement letter, letter subject to finding out whether or not they will remove the $3,200 charge. If they don't, then, if they won't, then. It's a decision, but also the liability, I'd like to know about that, from Smith Insurance. I think.
I guess we should wait till the end of the month, at the 20th meeting or something.
Yes, no, done?
Well, I don't know, the software, it's, it's such a, if there's like a single source or whatever, I doubt you'd bid it, because depending on what you put in the specs, you probably get only one software that, that the specs needs, the specs about that. The services, the software actually is under the bid amount. It's the services, though.
True.
The services is what's the more expensive component.
And we have gotten three quotes, because we have Harris' quote, we have Williamson's law.
You don't have to bid for professional services.
So we're good, right?
I guess if you've gotten three quotes for the software, also.
We've actually gotten four.
Four, that's right, four.
You get another one.
We had Tyler, Harris, Williamson Law, and AccuFund.
So I guess I would, at this point, I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract conditional upon the removal, or at least the understanding of $3,200, as well as any liability insurance additional cost that he needed, just now.
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Alito.
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen.
Aye.
Mayor Byers.
Aye.
Motion passes.
When we find that information, it will be sent electronically to all of you, and you respond back.
Work in every place that, for the software.
Okay, so let's move to item number five. Resolution to authorize the mayor to sign breaking pledge funding agreement. Nails have gone back and forth, and I believe that you all have a copy, you have had the opportunity to have a copy and look at it, but I believe you'd like to comment on it. We would love any comment on it, but I don't know if we need to. I'm here just to kind of answer any questions and like that.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I'm Scott Solmack. I represent the builder applicant, and so I guess I'm here for to ask that you board approve the mayor to sign the funding agreement. And Mr. White and I have discussed this matter at length over the past 45 days or so, along with the bank's attorney. And so, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions that the board would have in regards to funding agreement. To the extent that I can't answer them, I'm sure Don, Mr. White could as well, so.
I believe that our insurance was the breaking, that there was an extinction in phase one and phase two, and it looks as if that has been placed. Is there a phase three in his plan? Although probably all the infrastructure that we have, that would be in place in phase two.
Yes, so there, there will be phase one and phase two of all. The reason why is it was actually broken down into two phases, is that the way that our law, our construction loan is set up with the bank, is that they want us to complete 39 of the units, get them 70% rented, and then that's with phase two. So phase one and phase two relates only to the way that the loan is structured, not in any way shape or form with how my client originally intended to afford the project. So it's phase one, and then once phase one is 70% rented, and then, then the bank will give us the money or the remaining money for phase two. But as you can see, for the infrastructure costs, a large part of the infrastructure costs are for phase one. So I think it's probably something about the 80% of our phase one stuff, so.
And the loan is, it's a 24-month construction, so the bank wants both phases completed within 24 months. They did agree to this. So, and this is one of those things that hopefully will never come into play, that the project will get built to the, you know, to completion within 24 months, and pass all of those inspections, and get rented.
Yes.
That's going to give the top markets and all those inspections.
And can you just tell the board where your client's at with like a timeline to commence?
Sure. So we signed the loan commitment back in, in September, and we've been working diligently towards closing, and we anticipate actually to be closed before Thanksgiving. And our loan issue requires that we commence construction within 30 days of closing, so I guess that's Christmas.
It's that time of the year, sorry.
Yeah, it is, it is, but.
Probably a lot of it will be.
It's still, it's 50 degrees out, you know, right now, so.
All the trees and things are there, so. Poison ivy will be significantly less, I guess, at that time, indoors of, back then. So then we're looking at completion in 20, 2020, 21, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I know, based on what we had in terms of public hearing and the number of businesses that we're looking forward to it coming in, and I've had a discussion with Jake talking about connection. One of the things that we've talked about is the ability to connect that end with the village in terms of walking, not just driving into the village or blocking. So maybe some improvements down the line in terms of connectability and sidewalks and that kind of thing. So we're looking to the future for this, so.
Great, thank you.
Andy, do you want to? I, I sent an email, I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it, it was inserted in response to Jake's, that basically outlines how this works. Most of it's really at Will's discretion, if he feels that the infrastructure improvements aren't being completed in a timely fashion, he can put the bank and the builder on notice, and then they've got 60 days to decide, you know, to get going, or the bank can do it now. Absent that, that's when the money would go into this, in essence, like an escrow account that the village could then use to get those items completed. But again, the, the hope is, is that this will never have to come into play.
It's, it's a little different than a letter of credit, because ordinarily, with a letter of credit, once certain portions of the project have been inspected and approved, then that inspection approval is brought before the board, and the board issues a notice to the bank to release the funds. That's taken away, and we don't have that purview here in this particular agreement.
Just to everybody's understanding, the appendix aid, which outlines the monies and what's been done, earthwork and erosion controls, door drainage, sanitary sewers, pavement, concrete, earthworks, erosion control, et cetera, and it outlines all of the monies that would be held for those. And the total is very close to the original. We went back to that in terms of the letter of credit originally brought to the board. $1,059,000, more than $71,000. Phase one. Phase one, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and phase two, a hundred and ninety-two thousand. I personally am satisfied with it, and I think Will has a responsibility. I'd love to see the paper.
Okay.
Then I would, do I need to read the whole thing, Donna?
The funding agreement, no. You just need to ask for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the funding agreement.
Then I will do that, and I will ask the board to pass a resolution to authorize myself to sign the Brooklyn Bridge funding agreement.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine?
Aye.
Trustee Lowry?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we'll do that.
Mayor Byers?
Yes.
If I could ask a question, perhaps I could clarify for the board the discussion about the thirty-two oh six. If you look at page four and page five of the engagement letter, there is a distinction between, one, Brisbane Services, the gold solution plan, which is thirty-one thousand dollars. The thirty-two oh six is within the software package, and that's being paid to Accufund. There is a distinction between the company we will be taught, the program, and the actual software. Therein is the distinction, because Accufund is from where the software comes, and Brisbane is who will be teaching us how to use it.
So it's their payment.
So the thirty-two oh six is within the actual software package, and the thirty thousand is the gold solution from Brisbane.
Which would that be next year to you, or just this year? Would it be every year?
No, the twenty-two nine forty-six is the total cost of the software.
Okay.
And then each year after that, after November, if we should sign this month, each year in November, we will pay a three thousand dollar annual software maintenance fee, just like you would on any other piece of equipment you have.
Which we pay what, eleven thousand or something?
Correct, yeah, on Harris.
And then additionally for.
And that's not even, the eleven thousand is on fewer modules than we're going to get from here.
Yeah.
So does that make sense to the board now? Does that make it clearer?
It does.
And so now the only thing we're concerned about is.
The liability.
The liability.
I will follow up, if that's okay, I will email him tonight before I leave this evening, so he can get an answer to us on property.
Thank you, Chris.
Totally.
So Scott, do you want just one original?
If you, I think if you just send me a copy, that's probably fine.
Well, no, you, well, the original needs to go to the, I can get that.
I'll send you the original.
Okay.
Then you can send me a fully executed copy after
Yes.
your client signs it and the bank person signs it.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We look forward to it.
Yes.
Me too.
Have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Scott.
Next we have the resolution to adopt the policy change. We have provided view with the original policy. It is section five, in section five seven, internal control policy, and specifically regarding internal control policy, cash receipts policy. As you can see, you have in your packet spread letter, changes for the cash receipts policy, but I wanted you to understand what the changes were and why they were made. This was last updated in two thousand and twelve, and it talks about the front office maintaining two cash drawers, drawer A for water, drawer B for general. That no longer is needed. We no longer have water, so there is, as it has here, A cash drawer, and it is used in conjunction with central receipts program. The drawer A always carried a balance of seventy-five dollars, and drawer B carried a balance of one hundred. We have changed that to drawer now, which is a hundred and fifty. Correct? So there is that change as well, from the original and from the two thousand and twelve. The next paragraph stays the same. Then there is the elimination of the water payments omen and the water department assistant. Those two paragraphs are gone. There is an addition here, the electronic payments received from customers are acceptable and be reported via manual journal entries or through the regular cash receipts transaction journal. And that is a change. The next paragraph to front office staff, that is in the original as well. And then turning to the end here, it says, "The treasurer backed up by the clerk and deputy treasurer must deposit all monies." And so we do now have a change, and this was written to clerk and deputy treasurer at the legal board. So we have a change here. Okay? Otherwise, everything else remains the same. So basically the removal of the water drawer and water policy as well as the hundred and fifty dollars and the electronic.
And Mr. Mayor, just so I can explain, we have come with an agreement. We are currently in the process of making an agreement with.
Oh, wait, watchers.
Wait, watchers. And they would like to play by, pay by electronic transfer.
So they do?
Not yet, we're still working that out. And I did forward their requested agreement to Don for his review. They want to change a lot, and we're not really comfortable with the changes that they have. They don't want to be responsible for anything, any damage, and they also don't want to pay our security deposit, so I forwarded their change to Don. I will keep you updated on that.
Well, that aside, I think that the policy change is good, so I would ask for the resolution to adopt policy change in section five seven, the policy manual internal control policies. Effective immediately.
Wait a second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lowry?
Aye.
Trustee Belkine? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Last item here for us in terms of the board business, I would like to take this opportunity to bring, again, to the attention of the public and to the board, a the study that was done that we had done through our wastewater treatment plant. Recently, a lot of focus has been on the joint study. We had our study, the town had their study, and then we went together and said, okay, let's do a joint study, which is called the regional plan, if you will, including the village in with the town. So I would like to bring this back again, I think it's been a while since it was presented to the board, this was presented quite a while ago. So if you would, I have copies of a somewhat a brief summary, and I probably do not need to go through all of this in a matter of time, but there are copies that I have made available. The beginning talks about the background, village owning its own wastewater treatment plant, as well as all of its infrastructure. Talks about a history of it, starting in nineteen thirty-four, as a slow sand filter plant, and then upgrades in fifty-six, sixty-four, and seventy-nine. Talks about primarily the preliminary treatments, the process, and that comes a little bit later, I don't need to reiterate that later or now, and then talk about it later. There was a study that was done in two thousand and fifteen, Carl, before you were here, it was on the digester, and we had a significant problem, that's where we moved to the closing of the primary and the work that was done on it. They looked at the outside of it as well. Then we further asked for a study, and that was to look at the condition of the remaining process equipment and structure, and develop recommendations for the potential improvements at the water treatment plant. We also asked for alternatives, but I'm not going into those, this is looking strictly at our own structure and process. So the study objectives included evaluating the condition and capacity of our unit properties at the Village of Wexner Water Treatment Plant, meet the existing and future design requirements and recommendations for proposed improvements, as well as preparing a possible asset investment schedule across a twenty-five year planning period. Next, I summarized the existing facilities, talks about the nature of the village, the size of the village, household median income, thirty-five thousand seven hundred and eight compared to Monroe County at fifty-two thousand. The village population at the two thousand and ten census of five thousand three hundred and ninety-nine, and it's projected that we will increase at about four percent, four point four percent over the next twenty-five years, I believe. Then it talks about what the village water treatment plant serves, primarily residential and commercial properties, significant flow from Xerox, however, the characteristic of that flow from Xerox is the same or commensurate with domestic sanitary wastewater. We have approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty-six EDUs, which we use a sixty thousand gallon premium value in terms of determining that, and that basically is one EDU per household, and as you know. The total then, including the Xerox, our totals are projected around eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five EDUs, I believe. The town had a little bit less in terms of their projection, but this is what was used in the, in our study. Then talking about the existing components, I've listed all of the components that we have down there, the bar screen, mechanical bar screen, the vortex grit removal system, the affluent flow measurement, the partial flume, the aeration tanks, we have three of them, trickling filter and the pump station, two circular final clarifiers, the affluent flow measurement, and outfall sewer, as well as two anaerobic digestors, the centrifuge and sludge drying beds. Service buildings, but I won't go into those. Then there was a brief summary of what happens as the water comes in, and we do have a picture up there at the top, but raw wasted water flows by gravity from the village via twenty-four inch diameter effluent sewers. Septage was brought in and was introduced at a manhole out of the affluent building. It has not been and won't be until we have a proper holding tank and covered building for it, and of course, leachate was not, is out of the question in the future. Influent building consists of a mechanical bar screen and a vortex grit removal system. The flow continues by gravity to a splitter box that is distributed to the three pre-eration primary settling tanks. The primary effluent is combined in an effluent box and flows to the trickling filter pump station. It's then recirculated and is pumped to the trickling filter. The trickling filter effluent that is not recirculated is distributed to two final clarifiers, and the final effluent is discharged to the outfall sewer and goes to the town, where it is combined with the treated effluent from the town prior to disinfection, chlorinated, and then discharged to Lake Ontario together. The solids that we have go to the anaerobic digester for stabilization, and waste sludge is pumped to the primary digester where it's heated and mixed via recirculation pumping. It's then transferred to the second digester and to the centrifuge where it is dried, and then it is sent to the landfills. The next section skipping ahead goes to the alternatives that were evaluated, and the eternal, the evaluation covered quite a few of the things that are there. Jake, I think you have another slide up there or picture where, the grade, and the grade would be, and it might be hard to see, grade would be the different components that we looked at for improvements. First of all, installing a septage receiving station, an equalization tank, as well as a building that we could have leachate, not, excuse me, leachate, but septage introduced in that building so that we could continue and resume taking septage. It would hold, it would equalize, it would put it in, not in terms of larger than we would slug loading, but it would be put in over time, which would not stress the system. Improving the hydraulic profile of the affluent channel, and then replacing the mechanical equipment in the primary clarifier one and the deteriorated scum pipes and clarifiers two and three. We would replace the antiquated trickling filter pumps with variable frequency dry pumps, two of them, to operate on target level. We would have a recirculation valve that would deal with real-time distribution control flow to the trickling filter pump station. We would deal with the wastewater sludge pumps and allow for redundancy. Replacement pumps would be electrically driven, positive displacement pumps to eliminate the need for compressors in the pump and lower building. The digester heating system would be replaced with a new system fired by a condensing boiler and heat exchanger. We would also replace the sludge recirculation pumps, performing rehabilitation on the anaerobic digest. Performing energy efficient improvements as recommended in the two thousand and five wastewater engineering study, as well as performing AC improvements as recommended for the various buildings, because we've had problems with removing and keeping circulation. I won't go on for the rest of them. There are structural repairs that also would be done through the affluent building, the primary clarifier, the chemical storage building, digester building, digestors themselves, as well as the north sludge drying beds. So there's quite a bit of rehabilitation that was put together, suggested and recommended, and I want to bring to the attention again of all, that as the costs were added together, the total cost estimate for improvements listed to the village water wastewater treatment plant turned out to be three million nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. That's what we were looking at as an estimate for those initial improvements that need to be done in the short term. We also have a long term. There will be a period where the life expectancy of some of these things will run out, and so there is a phase two, which doesn't come until somewhere around the year two thousand and thirty, it looks like two thousand and thirty, and then there is a, at the end of the life cycle, there is a third phase. The contingency costs, as well as the engineering and the bonding and legal services, total one million one hundred and eighty-two thousand, to give us a total projected two thousand and eighteen cost of what, five million one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars that we would need to buy for those improvements. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention again, remind everybody about the study that was done. An asset investment schedule was provided. It talks about the initial capital costs for the immediate improvements necessary, talks about future capital costs going together as debt service, operational costs as well as maintenance costs, and then shortening asset cost. Those are provided to everyone. It was a scale that initially was set up to slide. It was a scale that initially was set up to slide and to have a progressive increase from year to year, starting with two thousand and seventeen when we were at a hundred and nine, this year we're at one twenty, and ending at a total of in two thousand and forty-one at three hundred and thirty-eight dollars per EDU. Looking at this, we have, I have looked at it in terms of an averaging so that there is a hold, and going to an average value of one eighty-five, we would maintain a constant one eighty-five, allowing for the cost increases of O and M costs, as well as constant debt service increasing. We would go until the year two thousand and thirty-two with a one eighty-five average. Of course, we would have to increase in the year two thousand and thirty-three. At that time, an average could be held for an additional ten years at three oh eight, and we don't know out there in two thousand and thirty, thirty-three where anyone will be necessarily, and even if so, that cost is right, and that would be at that point below the Monroe County cost for pure water. Several villages are, I just wanted to put that out so that everyone is aware, not only the regional, the town, but also a reminder about the village stuff. Yep? Anything else that we've got? Jake, that did pretty much summarize, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
There's no worries.
It is a large jump.
Twenty twenty-nine and twenty-three.
It is a large jump, and again, we're very consistent for a long period of time.
That jump in there represents an additional investment. It's life cycles, you know, of certain processes and equipment down there. You know, they anticipate the life cycle, life cycle analysis of the equipment, and they projected up for twenty, twenty-five years. They say, okay, in this time, we expect to have this much more investment necessary than just like any other thing they have to replace or do maintenance on. So that's including another, you know, phase in twenty thirty.
Right, you can currently see in twenty thirty the jump there, or is that true?
Yes.
That's the phase two?
Yeah.
And then there's another gap in terms of phase three into the year twenty thirty-five.
Yeah.
That was projected, and one of the other things was that we could, at that point, look and see what light, you know, is in what we have and make decisions at that point. That's been the decision that I would be taking at that point.
No difference at all?
Right. And again, if that's in any situation that, yeah? Okay, well, then I will move on, Don. Anything you would like to break additionally to the board?
There is not.
All right, stop. Anything further that you would like to discuss with the board?
Yes, sir. So we had a couple things. Okay. So I just recently sent in our certificate of village surrender, our tax surrender for our unpaid village taxes. They almost need each board member to sign. The total amount before accumulated interest is eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents, plus the accumulated interest is four thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents, with a total amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. And that, the interest is eight percent from July second to ten thirty-one, and then it also includes a hundred dollar fee for each one. So I'll just need every board member to sign that.
What I had.
Yes.
What actually is going to happen?
And then, so just wanted to make you aware of that. We sent it in today, but we sent it in anyway with the understanding that we would, I would have you sign it after the meeting.
So those who have not yet paid their village tax, this goes to the county and the county to, or county to.
Yes. So they make us. And then if any of you have any questions to that, let me know. In addition to that, I know there were some talk last meeting or two meetings ago, Jake brought it up, about planning a ribbon cutting for the North Gap Connector project, and so I'd be happy to take that over if you have some dates or if you have to start thinking about it.
Are you ready, Jake?
Is it complete yet?
Yeah.
Because the last week, last time you had said they were, you were supposed to have a meeting, and then...
We called that the yeses.
In the minutes, if you'd like to go back to the minutes.
The co-grant lights are not removed yet. I've been working with RPD, they've been very responsive lately. We had a poll that was a meeting for a year and a half, I've been discussing with them. They came over and straightened that up. I have another poll that's in the middle of the sidebar preparing to be moving. Should be scheduled for yesterday, and should be early next week, and now we're talking about a couple inches of snow on Tuesday, so we'll have to see, see what that does. So...
In my experience with handling these types of events, it's okay to push it off till spring, I just want to start putting it into your minds.
I think spring might be a better, I mean, some of the plants are down there, flowers and the other ones on there, and provide a nicer background to them.
Okay.
And warmer.
Great. So I will bring that up again later.
Jake, I had two citizens ask me what's going to happen with the new gazebo down there as far as the Christmas decorations. Is there going to be a Christmas tree inside that gazebo or something?
I have not planned on a Christmas tree inside that gazebo.
Have garlands and greenery gum wrapped around some of them.
Yeah, yeah, something.
I have not planned on that.
Some lights, okay.
Well, then whatever.
If you have something laid in the ground, you could throw it there if that's...
I think we defer that from parks to me.
I got some of those icicle lights.
Yep. Week from Monday, we're meeting a week from Monday.
I wonder if you're along the, I need one of the columns or...
Well, couldn't we do something next?
Oh, we can, anything's, anything's possible, just time and money.
They're not listening, so...
But week from Monday is parks and we'll discuss it there.
Monday?
Or Tuesday, I'm sorry, week from Tuesday. But I switched, it's Tuesdays because Jake can't do Mondays. I sent the schedule to Heather, she's, she's got it.
I think I'd actually show you right in the middle of that thing and look really...
Read, give me suggestions.
Yeah.
Are there power outlets there?
Is it during the day or...
If you want me, we know we weren't planning on it, but no, we can, we'll do what, we'll do what you can do.
And then, I just had a couple other things, sorry.
Okay.
So Chris and I have been working together on, we had some issues with making transfers from our savings account to our checking account because we are limited in how many transfers you can make, which most everyone is. So I talked to a couple other villages to see kind of what they do, and I had, we both had come to the agreement that maybe we should put everything into the checking account and then determine what our expenses are, and then, I mean, we don't leave into the savings account, we leave everything into the checking account. And it just makes more sense because I have to go to the bank and make transfers, which is just very timely, and in addition to that, I also found out that we could get a check capture program, which the Kennebago National Bank would provide it, and we'd be able to deposit the checks immediately into the accounts on our own, and it would save us trips to the bank. So...
Just like the app on your phone, where you just take a picture of it and watch it move.
Yeah. So it'd be in there immediately, it would save us a lot of time, and we'd get a lot of checks. We would also go to the bank if we get cash, which we do sometimes for passports, but generally it's checks or credit card. So I asked Chris to reach out to her contact at Kennebago National Bank, and so we're in the process of doing that. I think it'll save us enough.
So that'll be a separate checking account?
Yes. Either a new checking account or our existing general checking account.
Either one.
Yes. I believe it can only go to a checking account.
So you've been transferring money from the savings to the checking?
Yes, that's what they were doing. Putting it in the savings and out of savings.
And you use a checking account, and then what's left, I'll be going to transfer back into a savings? How often is it made?
We're making transfers every, because everything goes into the general savings at this point, so, but everything is debited out of our checking account, so we're making, we got a date, and it's basically a letter from the bank saying, here, we're going to close your account if you don't stop making so many transfers.
Oh.
So we, I was looking, talking to some other treasurers and clerics, asking what they do, and it just seems like it makes more sense. And sometimes I'm sitting at the bank for a half hour as I'm trying to do transfers, it's not a good use of time, I don't think.
Anything else you'd like to add?
One last thing.
Yes.
Holiday party. Our training holiday party, it's coming soon, and everyone really enjoyed being able to work together and have some food and just work together and talk, and so, and everyone really enjoyed the training that we had for the add some sugar training, which wasn't my choice because it was a little bit depressing, but anyway, I looked into it, and we can actually have a holiday party, we can, we can have a line item as long as we're doing some sort of training. So I talked with some of the, some of the front office staff and the, and the back office, and we can either have it here again, or we can go somewhere. Just wanted to take your guys' input and permission.
So they were happy we didn't show up at the first party?
Well, I was there. Daryl was there, Judy was there.
Judy was there.
I was there.
You were out.
Yeah, they were next.
So you were the next.
Okay.
But we were in.
But I was there for the training. Will did an excellent job.
Yes, he did.
A little long, I think.
Yes.
A bit shorter.
Oops.
It was good, actually. And I am looking forward to your setting something up for this.
Yes, the guys are very excited about that.
I'd love it.
Yeah, we did one last week in Henry, and this, this one was with the state troopers, and they branded dog, it was a hot dog training, that was pretty cool. Technically, I don't like his sick, a guy, a suit, it was pretty cool, a lot.
Sounds great.
All right, we'll give it some thought.
Okay. One last thing is that they, certain people wanted to, they suggested bringing spouses, and I said that might be too expensive, but there were some ideas that if we invite spouses, then they could pay for their own way for the spouse.
Think if you put on a function and you invite them?
Yeah.
Either don't, or...
For the training?
Personally, I think it's just another opportunity for the entire staff to, you know, work together and just get a chance to get to know each other better, but if everyone wants to...
As long as we're, if we're going to get to know each other better, maybe some activities around that.
Yeah.
Not throwing the football across the room.
Well, as I said, give it some thought.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing that I would mention is that we did put three hundred thousand dollars of the undersigned fund, we got available into a three-month CD, earning approximately sixteen hundred million, fifteen million dollars of interest over that period of time, and at the end of that three months, we'll reconsider it. And in short term, we are, we are able to get it back should we need it, we have a catastrophic event, but we're in pretty good shape, so it, I thought was a good opportunity to earn a little bit of interest. So just let you know that that's one of the things that we've got. Okay, Department of Public Works, I know you guys are moving through the village, looking at leaves, getting them up as quick as possible.
We, we are...
We'll have a freeze next week, hopefully, frost, and they'll drop.
Well, hopefully they'll drop and not get covered, as we went through the whole village last week in about two and a half days, and we'll be struggling to finish. Our polls always go through the village at least once, you know, do an entire trip around the village at least once every week. It's, it's going to be a struggle this week, there's a lot, we looked at streets that we did today, and it doesn't look like we went down them because everybody came out after, after work and rigged them all back up in the piles and having some good wind. So it looks like Tuesday, we're expecting a, you know, a couple inches of snow, they say, in the latest weather reports we looked at, so if that's the case, obviously we shift over to the snow, and then I don't think it's the here-to-stay snow, I think it'll be the, hopefully not. But just want to remind everybody, keep in the grass, keep the, keep the leaves in the grass, not in the gutters, and if we say don't put the leaves in the gutters, it doesn't mean right come out past the gutters into the street even further, that doesn't work well for, for anybody. And when they're in the street, or along a curb, or along a gutter, all they are is a dam for when it rains, and then they end up getting swept down into the, into the storm service system, there's, there's nothing falling into the, you know, from the trees that'll land on the road anyway, we don't need any help piling them up. So if they're along the edge of the grass, along the edge of the road, we've got a flexible hose on the leaf bag, we get them, and it does create a dangerous situation when people are, you know, zooming around them to avoid a leaf pile, and, you know, they have to pull one out of the lane, so that's my, my message for that, I guess. And keep in mind, it's going to be snow season soon, unfortunately sooner than we hope, I bet, and when we salt the village, you know, there's a sensible salt aim, so we can cut down on the amount of salt that we use, where we only salt the hill to the intersection and here, so there's snow on the ground, drive like there's snow on the ground.
Well, I think I would announce that for public notification, serial bond principal and interest payment for a bond obtained in two thousand and twelve for a hundred thousand dollars, and will be made in the amount of fifty thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents filed under fifteen two thousand and thirteen. That's about, that was for the outfall, for the sweeper, also for milli and paid in the bourbon and bourbon lines. I would, Peter asked, when is the biz next bash?
The White Christmas, oh, the Bourbon Bash is...
Bourbon Bash this weekend.
It's this weekend.
This weekend?
Absolutely, Harmony House, I think from one to four, but a good idea would be to go to the Webster bid website, very easy to get to, and it's, it's actually right there when you, when you call up the website, you'll see the whole thing, it's a...
This weekend?
Yep.
And then December first is White Christmas, and I saw, that came across in terms of something assigned, close the streets and all of that kind of thing, so looking forward to that. Maybe it'll be a White Christmas, these will be all collected, we'll see.
What's happening?
There's reports that there's no elf costumes, no one happens to them, so...
The elf costumes are lost?
So, so the Bourbon Bash is from six to nine?
Six to nine, okay, thanks.
Was there an elf costume?
No elf costumes, sorry.
As you said, pops up immediately.
Yeah, it's right there when you pop it up, so if you're interested in it, it's right there, and they can give you the details, they can tell you how to get the tickets and everything.
Where is it, what are the beneficiaries of it?
Yeah, it's at the end, I think.
Go to Operation Food Basket and watch your bravery effort.
something to sign, close the streets and all of that kind of thing, so looking forward to that. Maybe it'll be a White Christmas, leaves will be all collected. Let me see.
What, what's happening? Yeah.
The elf costumes are headlong.
So, so the Bourbon Bash is from 6 to 9?
6 to 9, okay, thanks.
Was that an elf costume?
No elf costumes, sorry.
As you said, it pops up immediately.
Yep, it's right there when you pop it up. So if you're interested in it, it's right there and they can give you the details, they can tell you how to get the tickets and everything.
Where is it? What are the, um, the dictionary searches?
Yeah, it's at the end, I think.
Go to the operation food, food basket and watch your bravery effort.
Well, they did an outstanding job through the summer, the great summer.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's, what's happening on Monday?
What's happening on Monday?
For Veterans Day.
Nothing here. The veterans wanted to, they only look at 11/11 and I did not offer to open this up and serve. We are funding their dinner, but they are at the DFW.
Okay.
So they may be available to them and we're making it available.
Is there a ceremony?
Pardon me?
Is there a ceremony in the park?
Ceremony is 11/11/11.
In the park?
In the park, exactly.
If I, if I can make a correction, it's going to be at the American Legion on the corner of Five Mile Line in Ridgefield, is where that lunch is going to be.
That to Trump, um, Andrew Warren?
Yes, yep. And, and actually, I've talked to Graham, told him he was, one of the past managers, obviously owns Fremont over here, used to run the, the lunch. And I'm an exploratory advisor in the fire department over here, so we've got five or six of the explorers that are over and serve, and my wife and I and my younger son as well, so we're going to be up there on Sunday, setting up with them, they are already having a ceremony out there.
Also, I would announce that, again, remind that there's a, I believe, Dan Helman, Dan Helman at the American Legion Post on the Wednesday 28th, from 10 to 12. They should be doing the New York State, we got honor induction for armed, armed service of.
Veterans Hall of Fame.
Veterans Hall of Fame, that's, that's, that's from 10 to 12 on Wednesday, November Next, I would also mention that there is a joint meeting. The village board will be the 11/29th, that is Thursday, the 29th. The joint meeting will be held at the town hall in their board's meeting room and will be at 7 o'clock. I determined it is 7 o'clock. Our next village board meeting is different than a Thursday, it's on Tuesday for Thanksgiving. It will be the 20th, Tuesday, the 20th, 7 o'clock, right here.
Right here.
All right.
That's the town board meeting room, actually isn't in the town hall.
It's in the back.
It's in the building in the back where the library is.
The port building, is that what you call it?
Yep.
The port building?
But if you say the town hall, it's confused people because it's not really in the town hall.
Thank you. Well, if that's it, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn in 8:16.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming. We receive on the 20th.
You did a job tonight. Appleby's had a great, very far veterans. I'm going to go up there.
Do you guys need him to sign this now or do you have?
All those challenges.
I have.